All right, everybody ready for the meeting? All right, let's bring the Wednesday, May 8th, 2019 regular meeting of the Dune City Council to order, please. Go ahead.
Mayor Forsythe?
Here.
Council President Sheldon Meyer?
Aye.
Where shall I start this time? Uh, Councilor Tom Allen?
Here.
Councilor Duke Wells?
Here.
Councilor, oh, I already did that. Alan Montgomery?
Here.
Councilor Susan Snow?
Here.
Does anybody know her?
He had to go to the school board.
Okay.
All right. Well, send me the book. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So vote.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. Now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Point of order?
Yes.
There are amended bills of the session.
Great.
The legal piece went down. Enjoy.
Concluding the amended bills of session.
Seven.
Any second. Any? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved with the amended budget, amended bills of session. So. Announcements?
Wow, this is a different time. Show up at four, huh? I'm sorry. Dune City's like, you'll hear in just a minute. Dune City is looking for volunteers to help out with the Seventh Angel Animal Dune City Triathlon, Duathlon. Volunteers are urged to register early so that they have the best chance to get their first choice for their assigned location. Nominations for Volunteer of the Year Award are open. Forms can be downloaded from the website and turned in to City Hall before May 31st, 2019. A Budget Committee meeting has been scheduled for Wednesday, May 15th.
Four o'clock.
At four o'clock.
Four now?
Yes.
Okay, so we moved from the 14th to the 15th and from four to five.
Yes, and it's four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
And...
Four.
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 Although not required to do so, the Planning Commission will hold a public meeting regarding the proposed development of the Woods at Little Winkle on Thursday, May 23rd, at 6:00 PM.
All right, do we have any citizen input on items not on the, not involved in the public hearing?
No.
Presentations, none? Public hearing.
Um, is that what that was?
Ordinance 252.
We adopted that last month.
No. It's not being read.
Yes.
252.
That's long ago.
252.
No?
It was 251. I need to correct it somehow. It says, but it didn't, and that's it.
But that's not what that ordinance is for.
We're trying to figure out which number of the ordinance.
That's an ordinance to correct the script errors. So did I give it the wrong number? I guess is what I was afraid of.
The number is correct.
Oh, the number is correct. I don't know. We're okay now.
Are we good?
I think so. But it doesn't incorporate the 251.
Yes.
And we call for Susan Snow? Yes, I'm just, and they're still trying to say other...
No, no, we're good. We got it.
All right, so now we're into a public hearing. So, let's see. So don't we have to close this meeting and open a public hearing?
Time for the record, please.
I was asking you a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you close this and you open the public hearing.
All right, we'll close the regular meeting at 6:06 and open the public hearing at 6:07.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you do have to take the consideration of the first reading first.
You do do the first reading first.
Yes. And that has to be unanimous.
Okay. All right, so this one is, proposed ordinance requires two readings before it can be enacted. City Charter, Section 34.3 provides for both readings may be read by title only. If no council member present at the meeting requested to be read in full or if a copy of the ordinance is provided to each member at all requirements, proposing advertising has been met because any of the councillors desire the ordinance to be read in full. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only. So move. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll read ordinance by title only. Ordinance 252 by title only. An ordinance amending Chapter 91 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances entitled "Nuisances" by correcting script errors in Ordinance Number 220, which led to script errors in Ordinance 251, repealing Ordinance Number 220 and Ordinance 251. So now we'll open the public hearing at 6:08.
I see where no one has signed up to speak.
Okay. If there is no public comment, this councillor has, do the councillor have any questions before we close the public hearing? If none, then we'll close the public hearing at 6:08. I would entertain a motion to amend the language of ordinance 252 as presented, if any. So. No questions, no changes. And I will now entertain a motion to have a second reading of ordinance 252 by title only. So vote. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we have done, we have passed that.
You have to read it the second time.
Right.
Then give a motion.
Ordinance amending Chapter 91 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances entitled "Nuisances" by correcting script errors in Ordinance 220, which lead to script errors in Ordinance 251, repealing Ordinance Number 220 and Ordinance 251. I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording of 252 as presented. Motion? So move. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There is 252.
Basically, what it, what it happened is they applied the other section.
220 and 220.
Yeah, right.
251.
220 had a numbering error. We had two Section 3s or something. Anyway, it was duplicate and so in reliance, when I put 251 in, I used the wrong number because it was already numbered wrong before. It's just correcting number.
So that's this thing, 101 through 31.
Whatever it is is now numbered correctly.
Okay. That's where it's thought, we're jumping from 252 to 101. Okay. All right, so we have a roll call vote on this one?
Yes, please. Councilor Snow?
Yeah.
Councilor Montgomery?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
Council Wells?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 252 is hereby adopted and will become effective May 10th, 2019.
You all should have a revised Resolution Series 2019 Number 3. The state sent the city forms to use that originally appeared like the original version that was in your packet for those who saw it. But then I received a second email saying that, no, we do have to have the election that the city provides for, at least four of the services. So I had to redo it. That's why you've got a revised one on the dials. Maybe there's a correction to the year there? Is there?
Yeah, you have 220.
Ooh, that's nice. I don't have the original. I don't know all of them on the schedule. Where is Section 1, last item?
Last, last set of numbers. See Section 1? City of Dune City resolves as follows, Section 1, we'll go up right here.
Is that letter you just had? I'll just come up here. You can point at it while I'm... Oh, yeah, this one. It's not the one we're doing. Okay. We're doing the new one.
I don't have any.
Should have been on the dials.
Oh, yeah, I got it. Here it is. Yeah.
What about it? Why don't you do that?
This one?
Can you get that one?
Should it be this one?
Yes, that one's correct. So, yes, that's correct. That's the one. You okay to share? I'll get your copy.
Not this one, you go 2000. That's a really hard one. Yeah. All right. Well, set. So do you all know what, have you read through number three and understand what we're doing here? Yeah. Okay, just... So, Resolution on Number 3, public hearing deliberation. This is number three. Anybody have any questions on this document? This document is certifying, basically certifies of you providing these services as, as a city. Remember, we've had that discussion in the past of whether we really are a city based on the state definition of the city, what services we provide. And this is just an updated document showing the ORS of the state, ordinances or statutes that kind of prove to us that we are a, are a city and that we fall under these, that we have these conditions and that we still maintain those enhanced fire, street construction, stormy sewers, planning, zoning, and water utilities. Do we actually do any construction? No, we do lots of maintenance. Oh, it says construction, maintenance, and lighting. So we do maintenance and lighting in some areas.
And construction.
All right. Reconstruction.
Reconstruction, yeah. Yes, reconstruction.
So as long as you've all read it, agreed to it, so we need to do a roll call on this one as well because we have to count that.
We need to have a public hearing. Do I not put a public hearing in yet?
Yes, we do.
Coming on your script.
Not on the script.
Oh, sorry.
Here it is. Wait, it might be. Yes, it was on the paper. Yep, here it is. Number 3, Resolution Declaring the City's Election to Receive State Revenues. I think we can do this even without, with my hesitation. I'll do some research on it and if it turns out that I have further questions, we'll address it at that point in time. But they're minor, extremely detailed, so it's, it's not an issue. The problem is just, maybe we have a staff report on this issue, please. You explain it further than I did.
Um, ORS 221.770...
760.
No, no.
Oh.
770. Requires a city, first of all, to have a public hearing and adopt a resolution to receive state revenues for, state shared revenues, gas tax, cigarette tax, and liquor tax. State Code 221.760 allows cities in counties with over 100,000 people to just declare that they are entitled to receive state debt revenues because they provide at least four of a list of services to their residents. 221.760, and I'm pretty sure it's 60, says that cities in counties of less than $100,000 must also assess a property tax in addition to providing the four services. And so, because we're in Lane County and there are 323,000 people in Lane County right at the last census, then all we have to do is assert or aver that we provide at least four of all of those services. Now, there were questions have been raised about fire service because that is a taxable item, but Dune City also contributes and participates in the West Lane Emergency Operations Group, which means it's enhanced fire, and yes, that will qualify. And then the other thing is the utility. The utility is not defined like most of us would think of utilities where you're, you know, paying your electric bill or, or water bill or something like that. It is merely as defined as providing a mechanism by which your residents receive a, a item, a utility item. So in this case, we do provide a mechanism by which some residents can receive water. That is our interpretation from our attorney.
And the other thing about the fire protection is that we had that at one point until the Fire Department...
Former district.
When it became a special district. I think all of you will see on your property tax stickers, there's a portion of your property tax that goes to that special district for fire protection. Thank you.
So does, you need to invite the public to come forward if they want to, and we did not provide a sign up sheet, so...
Does anybody have any public interest or any public comments or would like clarification further on this? Nobody seems to, yeah. Okay. All right, so we can close the public hearing part of this at, I can't read the clock since 6:20. And with that, we can reopen the regular meeting of, if you can read it, May 8th, at the same time as 6:20. Now, I mean, we need to vote on this.
Is this the state revenues?
Yes, you, yes, it is.
I have a question before we vote. Janey, is it my understanding from what you just said that because we can be lumped into Lane County's population, therefore we're over 100,000, we do not need to have a tax?
That's correct.
I didn't know that.
That's Janey's interpretation of that.
And the attorney's.
Yeah, and the attorney's.
My, my only consideration with it, my only debate on it, is that I haven't sat down and read these that they're referenced, but the ones that have been referenced don't have stated anything about, directly about a city not being taxed. The, the interpretation that they're using is that, one of Janey's sayings, that, that we don't have to fit all of the categories if we're under 100,000 people. So, yeah, and so I just, I'm debating that, but again, like I said, sometimes I get a little too detailed, I'll look into it, but I'm, I'm good with it until such time as I'm not. And I don't vote on these anyway.
Well, it's, it's good that we have that workaround.
Yes.
I was not aware of that. And it makes me feel better about this whole issue personally.
Yep.
Because we would have a huge budget revision if we did not receive these revenues. So, you know, that gives me the, you know, should we have a plan B for just in the event that we don't get these revenues? And this, no interpretation, I think, resolves that in my mind.
I, I think it should be of some comfort, yes. Do we need a motion? We actually need to take, if you're done with deliberations, we need to take a national roll call.
Not a resolution, only on ordinance.
Your form requires...
Oh, that's probably, that's correct, yeah.
No, the form requires how many y's, how many n's?
Oh, okay. Let me off, we'll do it.
Yep.
I'll start at this end. Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Councilor Wells?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes. You remember him.
I, I forgot who he was. Councilor Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilor Snow?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Taxes. New business.
Okay. Staff report, you should have a copy of the staff report in your packets. On October 3rd, 1991, Dune City's then recorder Kathy Hildeland wrote a letter to an individual by the name of Jim Alexander regarding extensive remodeling and additions having been done to his property without building permits. In that letter, the recorder pointed out that great deal of the building was done in the Shoreland Zone and that such building is prohibited by Dune City Code. She also advised that the second structure on the property that was currently being rigid was also a violation of City Code because City Code only allows one residence per lot. During a city council meeting on November 14th, 1991, the city's attorney, Mr. Gerber, was advised that an intent to place a lien on the property should be treated through the abatement procedure. The council then voted to begin abatement procedures against Mr. Alexander, being clear that it was against the individual and not the property. The vote was unanimous and the matter was set for public hearing. At the public hearing on December 12th, 1991, the council revoked Mr. Alexander's right to obtain building permits in Dune City and placed a lien on the property in the amount of $5,000. On August 21st, 1997, fast forward, the city received a lien search request from Pioneer Title Company for the purchase of the property by Clyde and Edith Shields. The lien search report signed by the city recorder stated that there were no liens on the property. On December 19th, 2012, Dune City Permit Tech, on behalf of the city recorder Fred Hilden, executed another lien search report requested by Cascade Title, again stating there were no liens against the property. We recently received a new lien search request which prompted a review of the file that discovered that there was in fact a $5,000 lien unbeknownst to the new, to the owner of the property. He had no way of knowing because he paid for a title search and the city erroneously reported that there was no lien. My recommendation is given that there is no evidence to show that the lien was properly processed, I cannot find anything that says, I cannot find anything that says somebody came forward and paid. And in my conversations with Mayor Petersdorff, he recalled that the individual who perpetrated the violation took off for South America, abandoned the property, that's why it took six years for the bank to foreclose and resell the property. That's why it was 1997. So, given all that and the fact that for Mr. Kobel, he was just trying to sell his property, would like to sell the property, I make a recommendation that you forgive any fine that may exist against that property so he can close that spread. And clear up the mess in the file.
Because of such a current history.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion on this?
It sounds like he may have a case with the title company.
Yeah.
So these are not required to record anything?
Aye.
I misspoke before when I said we had to record it. We don't. We're supposed to maintain a lien docket.
But he did get title insurance, it sounds like.
Oh, he got title insurance.
So...
There, because the city told him there was no lien.
Yeah.
That's all that happens is they send a request to the city, that's why we charge them money, and the city said, nobody bother pull a file out and read it? And the city said, there was no lien.
So this is not going to cost Dune City $5,000 if we forget that?
No, 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 no. I, I don't even know if we ever really finalized the lien. I, you know, I can't find, we have no lien docket. One doesn't exist that I can find. It's got to be here somewhere. I just haven't found it yet.
Well, didn't we find out that liens have to be adjudged anyway? We can't just...
No, that's what I found out is that, no, they don't have to be.
Oh, they don't?
No. We have a hearing process in our code that allows, I have a issuing, or I have a hearing on issuing order, if they don't like it, they can appeal it. If it's a land use issue, appeal to the Planning Commission, if it's a other, other issue, straight to the city council.
I make a motion to forgive and forget this lien, or lack thereof. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that's the recommendation.
Thank you.
Consideration of quote-to-install software.
Um, I have to tell you, this is here because my limit in my contract says 250 and it is a $350 bill. But things went so horribly wrong at the office with the email that I went ahead and pulled the trigger because...
Thank you.
The permit check cannot do without email and what we did find out, and I'll say this on the record, this is exactly what I found out, is that Microsoft's last update conflicts with Charter and with Outlook. And therefore, a lot of people are having trouble with their emails. In our particular case, the entire Outlook disappeared, the whole file, everything disappeared. Still available online. I mean, I can get to the email, but in that computer, it is not there anymore. So, that's why I pulled the trigger to get that computer into the shop. It was fixed, we got it back. So, given all that, and the fact that for Mr. Kobel, he was just trying to sell his property, would like to sell the property, I make a recommendation that you forgive any fine that may exist against that property so he can close that spread. And clear up the mess in the file.
Because of such a current history.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion on this?
It sounds like he may have a case with the title company.
Yeah.
So these are not required to record anything? I, I misspoke before when I said we had to record them, you know? We're supposed to maintain a lien docket.
But he did get title insurance, it sounds like.
Oh, he got title insurance?
So.
There, because the city told him there was no lien.
Yeah.
That's all that happens is they send a request to the city, that's why we charge them money, and the city said, nobody bother pull a file out and read it? And the city said, there was no lien.
So this is not going to cost Dune City five thousand dollars if we forget that?
No, 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 I, I don't even know if we ever really finalized the lien, I, you know, I can't find, we have no lien docket. One doesn't exist that I can find, it's gotta be here somewhere, I just haven't found it yet.
Well, didn't we find out that liens have to be adjudged anyway, we can't just?
No, that's what I found out is that, no, they don't have to be.
Oh, they don't?
No, we have a hearing process in our code that allows, I have issue and, or I have a hearing, I issue an order, if they don't like it, they can appeal it. If it's a land use issue, appeal to the planning commission, if it's a other, other issue, straight to the city council.
I make a motion to forgive and forget this lien, or lack thereof.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that's the recommendation.
Thank you.
Consideration of quote to install software.
Um, I have to tell you, this is here because my limit in my contract says two hundred and fifty, and it is a three hundred and fifty dollar bill. But things went so horribly wrong at the office with the email that I went ahead and pulled the trigger because.
Thank you.
The permit check cannot do without email, and what we did find out, and I'll say this on the record, this is exactly what I found out, is that Microsoft's last update conflicts with Charter and with Outlook, and therefore a lot of people are having trouble with their emails. In our particular case, the entire Outlook disappeared, the whole file, everything disappeared. Still available online, I mean, I can get to the email, but in that computer, it is not there anymore. So, that's why I pulled the trigger, to get that computer into the shop, it was fixed, we got it back today. But I do need you to approve it because it is beyond my ability to pay my population as it currently stands in my contract.
Couple, couple things on this, folks, is Jamie and I talked about it, I told her go ahead and do it anyway. But the other thing, the other thing to consider besides the computer thing is her having such a low signature authority is difficult to run an office. So, I think we need to approve the computer payment, but then I would also interject that we need to, some, I think we need to make a resolution to, to raise her signature level to something more compatible today's expenses, like five hundred dollars or something like that. So, something to think about, but first of all, I'd like to. I make a motion to approve this, looks like good.
Second.
Good numbers, yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. You're off the hook.
Thank you.
And if you made more than three hundred and fifty dollars, we deduct it from your check.
Okay. But somebody else is gonna have to pay my medical insurance, that's the exact.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion to increase Jamie's signature level to at least five hundred dollars. So, vote.
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you very much. Old business. Consideration of, oh, the property.
Ah, just report, you asked me to report.
Yeah.
On the property. It is not big enough for a cell tower. That's obvious.
Oh, yeah, because we talked about the footprint.
It is not big enough, and it currently has no drivable access.
Yeah, it's lying.
Apparently so.
So it's landlocked?
Even hiking.
So it's kind of border.
I mean, it wouldn't take much to be able to push the dirt road down a little bit for it to get there.
So it's not a boundary issue, it's a physical issue?
Yes. Well, no, it's a boundary issue too, because it's too small for the.
I meant somebody's property line versus somebody else's property line, it's not, you said it wasn't accessible, I mean, is it, could be accessible?
Oh, yeah, 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 if we, if just, there's no road, I mean, the, the right of way is there.
Oh, okay.
But the road isn't.
But the physical road is.
The road is gone, yeah.
I think we talked about, this is the last meeting as well, any further consideration with this thing? Because I think we just asked Jamie to check and see if it was big enough to.
Right, to do what we could do, so.
Yeah.
That's one thing that we cannot do with it now. Could it be used for emergency storage or placement of a container? Through a conditional use permit, yes, it probably could, maybe if conditional use is approved.
Add a road.
Yeah.
Any thoughts, Jamie? Accepting property in and of itself that we would have to maintain, I'm concerned about.
I am concerned about getting a property and maintaining all the stuff on it, but that's just me, you know, you don't know what'll happen, it's not something that we have eyes on all the time, it's.
I agree.
It does sound like something you could use.
Sounds like a headache.
And no access. No access, yeah. And we're taking it out with the.
With my own.
Taxi district.
Can we get a vote or a motion?
All, uh, we need a motion to, to deny the acceptance of it.
Correct, thank you.
So, vote.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you, actually, the voice got some, the voice got him, has expressed interest, it's very close to them, I know.
Heavy.
It's worked out well.
There you go.
Yeah.
That would be real nice. Consideration of plan for the replacement of water meters, we've been kicking this one down the road for a while.
In your packets is another proposal that I received from the HD Fowler company. I have one copy that, I'm completely confident, just finder, of the last one. And perhaps you guys kept copies so that you know what the cost, what I'll talk to you at.
Does anybody remember Water West?
I'll tell you. Seventy-nine thousand, two hundred dollars split over about a five year.
Yeah.
A five year plan. And this one is the meters. I'm looking for the software. Oh, it's on there. It's three thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy, seventy-eight cents for the software, and with a three-quarter inch water meter. Those are each a hundred and eighty-nine sixteen a piece, and we would be required to contract with somebody for installation. So, a hundred and eighty-nine times, is it two hundred? Two hundred and sixty, what? Two hundred, yeah, we just used the round number, two hundred. It's, our current contract for installation of meters is, a hundred and fifty dollars per meter for installation. So that basically makes those three hundred dollars a piece. For two hundred, so, anyway, this is a significantly lower.
Were you able to price a one inch inflow and outflow meter?
I haven't, I haven't, that, I haven't pursued that. Because that would require, I mean, I know yours is one inch, and there's a few, few of the newer homes are one inch, and people went ahead and paid for a, a bigger meter than others. And the pipes that come out are however, which is the part that I am concerned about, of course, they would just be going into usually a treatment.
Three-inch.
Yeah, treatment system.
Do you just push down if they, if they had to, from the three-quarter out line?
Down to, okay.
Down to half.
So there might be some additional expense in that, but.
About fifteen or twenty dollars difference when I did it three years ago or two and a half years ago, twenty, the three-quarter inch and the one inch.
A fifteen dollar?
Fifteen to twenty bucks.
Yeah, fifteen to twenty is what I've been seeing too, on the ones that I have left out, so.
And you had indicated that the preference is one inch?
That's my, yes.
Now, these are the two companies that do business in this area. This, this company does all of the, all of the metering and system for South Coast Water District and Oregon Water Services over in Eugene and Springfield.
All right, comments?
I think we need to move on this, but I think maybe we could check, an upgrade to a one inch, I think, is more under, instead of the three-quarter inch.
That's what I'm understanding. A lot of the runs are long, three-quarters a good size for a short run, but a longer running, larger pipe size, so inch, inch, quarter inch for people that are long may have.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you get a break in the last? Would appear.
Analysis of the better pressure.
Is there a way that we could adopt the one inch sort of cap on if it's not more than?
Yeah, that's not working. So, did you do an analysis between the two, for us?
There, there isn't really anything different other than, I think, the larger one, the AMR plan, or as like the city of Florence uses, comes with a more detailed and complex repair and maintenance program. This one is, they will work with the software, if we have problems with the software, but if we have trouble with meters or anything like that, it'll be up to us to hire somebody else to do it. That, that's the, and I can't get, I'm not sure that the AMR plan includes any kind of maintenance for the meters, but they kind of indicated that they would, and I don't know if that means there's a guarantee or something that they would replace it, but this was so far different, the two were so far different, and I talked to Randy at South Coast Water District, their system is up and running, and he's thrilled, it takes Scott fifteen minutes to read all the meters in the South Coast Water District here.
And that's the Fowler?
And that's the Fowler.
Fifteen minutes, you, and the price was significant, oh.
Well, this one was seventy-nine thousand and this one's five.
The other possibility is, other than just the, the difference, I think a three-quarter and a.
Can't be that much.
And a one inch, but the rest of this stuff is, I'm assuming, constant, so it just seems like if it's not more than another fifty bucks or something, we have a cap.
The, one difference that is between, if you'll recall, when they came and did the presentation here, they had to have the meter and the radar thing, the transmitter. This one doesn't include any kind of transmitter.
It's on.
That's why I called, yeah, that's why I called Randy to see if it was working, because I knew that his had been installed, and he says, yeah, it's working like a charm. But theirs are all out of the street. Almost all of their meters are right out by the street, so, I don't know, it kind of worries me. I have asked HD Fowler to come down here, and perhaps they could do a demonstration, and if I can let you guys, if I have enough notice, I can let you guys know when the demonstration is, if someone wants to come out with me. But I want to go see how it would work in the real situation that we're dealing with, and see if we're gonna need boosters or radar transmitters or anything like that.
That would have the distance, the transmit distance.
Right.
Because of what they want to be able to.
So I'm not anxious for you to actually vote on this just yet, I, I don't feel, the difference is phenomenal. It kind of bothers me, what are we missing out on?
And it should bother you, there's, bidding with any contract, two contractors and one is that far off.
It bothers me.
They're not talking apples to apples.
Yeah, so it's not the same thing.
So, yeah, I'm in favor of you getting Fowler down here and filling his in.
I had hoped they could make it tonight, but they couldn't make it tonight.
Even if they double it, we're still.
Yeah, see, something, something's not comparable. All right. So I don't think we take an action tonight, other than, other than. Yeah, and.
Probably more info.
We, yeah, plus also make sure when you're talking Fowler, also talk to the other one about one inch.
Correct.
Yeah, I want to try to drag them as closely, talking apples to apples as we can.
That's a positive thing.
And I may make AMR sharp in the pencil.
Well, yeah, there's just something missing here.
Yeah. Something in the equation I haven't been able to figure out.
Right.
Excellent, thank you. All right, down to reports. I don't have anything specific, other than I'll, I'll follow up on some of the ORSs that I'm concerned about with our conversation about revenues, sharing. Tom, how about you? Anything?
Uh, really, nothing for me.
I'm skipping for, uh, do communities center, large quality?
We're going to test again this month and start with both lakes.
Cool. Jamie, public works.
Right now, everything is kind of at a lull, we were waiting for the weather to clear, and then Richard's mother's house burned down, so he's had to spend a lot of time over in bed, but I did talk to him, he's got some work orders that I sent him, and he'll be in, primarily cutting trees and crushing, because right now, there's trees ain't.
Yeah.
Get the trees cut up.
Emergency services?
Um, I did not attend WILAB because I was working on testimony to go before the legislature on the BCD issue. That was my meeting that morning, so, I didn't attend the WILAB, however, I did attend the WILAB goal setting session the following Wednesday, where we have started working on goals for the year, including when are, when is the expo going to be? Jenna handles that quite well. And if we're going to have any trainings and that sort of thing, so, when I'm no more, I will let you know. Ready for my report?
Yeah.
Uh, we have ten issued, ten permits issued in April, four structural, four mechanical, three plumbing and bioelectrical. These permits include one new home construction. The city has hired Kermit Tech, a Kermit Tech and an administrative assistant. Jaslyn Kenyon is the Kermit Tech, and Melissa House has joined staff as the administrative assistant, assistant, and both of them are a welcome relief. Much time over the last month was dedicated to covering the two empty positions, as well as working on the proposed budget. Planning Secretary Rick Lunsford Overholz has done a phenomenal job in helping out and covering all the tasks that need to be done. We welcome Peace Health, Oregon Pacific Bank, and Three Rivers Casino to the list of sponsors for this year's Oregon Dunes Triathlon. We're still looking for volunteers and sponsors for the event, which will be held Saturday, June eighth, and it is time to register to volunteer now, don't wait any longer. The sooner you register, the more likely it is that you'll get the job and location that you want. The city is also looking for sponsors for the event, sponsorships range from one hundred to five thousand, so there is a level available for every business. With over three hundred participants and all of their family and friends attending, the event brings in a lot of people to the Florence area, many of whom stay and play for the entire weekend. Now, since I wrote this, we also have a sponsorship, sponsorship from Driftwood Shores and BJ's Ice Cream, so more sponsors here for the event. We received one complaint regarding a nuisance dog. A letter has been sent to the dog owners, as well as the Lane County Animal Services Office, I believe I sent you all a copy of that letter, where I pointed out that, I pointed out what state law says. Numerous concerns regarding the quality of water, like Boeheim Lake water have been raised, especially for people that live in the South Cove area. And I have not been able, been able to get ahold of Steve Hager, or Mark Chandler, or anybody who may have, I think it's just normal flip.
I'm sure. Yeah, I live on it, and.
And I think that's what it is, but it just happens to be worse than usual or something? You don't think so?
It happens every year.
Yeah, I know. Okay. So what I intend to do is write, do some research on that part of a lake's life, and send out an email to the interested parties, and especially those that live on Boeheim, to explain what it is, and if they think it's something more than that, that can let me know, and we'll see what we can do. The Oregon Division of Land Conservation and Development will be conducting its National Flood Incident Plan Assistance Visit at Dune City on Tuesday, May fourteenth. I have been given a request, she made it sound so simple, okay? She said it'd be so easy, and then she sent me a thirty-page request of documents that I have to present. So, that's what staff is working on right now, trying to put all those together for next Tuesday's meeting. I should be well versed in flooding by then.
I should be well versed in flooding by then. We are also preparing for a public meeting regarding the proposed Woods, Woods Act, supposed to be Woods At Little Wolling subdivision. Uh, the planning commission will be holding the meeting on May twenty-third at six P.M. to allow interested parties to hear the details of the final plan. I met with Jack Applegate of Northwest Code Professionals, and we talked about the legislative action, which I just thought they were telling you about. And in other legislative news, House Bill twenty-three fifty-three goes to a work session, went to a work session yesterday. As it currently reads, when a DA makes a request to a city for information, the DA can waive the fees or confine the city if the DA thinks the city has been unresponsive or didn't respond fast enough. But it does not give clear timelines for those findings, it doesn't tell the DA, well, you know, you have to at least give them so much time, it just says, "You can do this if you feel like it's unreasonable." And so, everybody's asked to contact their legislators and try and get that clarified. I have not heard an update on that. Oh, that's not true, I did hear an update on that. That's right, he said today he thinks it's gonna die in committee, so, it's, it never came out of committee, so... And then, other than a good, good of the order, that is all I have. The good of the order is the flowers tonight, I think, were a gift from my daughter, but I would like to share them with all of the mothers in Dune City, and wish you all a happy Mother's Day.
Is this a good one?
Nothing.
They're asking for us to support porta potties.
Good of the order.
Yes.
Jamie, I, I know this is absolutely not you, because it's been going on forever and ever and ever, why can't we keep people in the office, the non...
Oh, this one was me. This last time was me.
Okay, well, the non-continuity makes it very difficult...
Yes, it does.
For both you and the citizens.
What historically has happened in the past is Dune City's a real good training ground.
Yeah. Oh, nice.
And people train in the...
Yeah, we get trained.
Um, in this particular case, we had some individuals who didn't care for my management style, and so they, they walked out. But, most of the time, it's because they get trained, and then they go on to...
So, it'd be much...
Hire many jobs. We can't compete. Well, we could, but we have to give up everything.
Right. I need that.
Jamie, we had a letter in our packet from Chamber of Commerce regarding...
Oh, thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah. Uh, we received a letter from the Chamber, Florence Chamber of Commerce, asking us if we could help out with roadie days by sponsoring the porta potties. The fee is twenty-six hundred dollars. And I'm sorry, I, I'm gonna say exactly what went through my mind, I don't know whether to be insulted or not.
Absolutely, she's being...
But, I told Batina I would refer it, and so I have referred it to the council for consideration. And I will be, I will be honest, you know, we do, city of Florence has historically sponsored, helped sponsor the triathlon, so the city has done good works for us, and we are allowed, because we're members, get to use the, the bulk mail permit of the chamber when we do our newsletters, with certain restrictions, so...
Have they offered to help us with our drivers?
Not to my knowledge, no.
What do you guys think?
My vote is to respectfully decline.
Give it a second.
A smaller donation would be more to our budgetary constraints. Twenty-six hundred dollars is a heck of a...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, excuse me.
We have so many things that we can't do that the city needs done.
Yeah.
I, I really don't think giving it to Florence is advantageous to the Dune City.
What it is, if they need a porta potty during the parade or something.
He makes another one.
First times, it's worth a lot. If it's handy.
I'm hesitant to jump on this one right now, because it would probably be considered to be our permanent...
Yeah.
Contribution.
Annual.
All right.
I like the idea about having a bank sponsor, make your deposit here.
I wonder if they have a cute slogan, it's like...
Drop in and see us? Wipe that off our record.
All right. Any other good of the order, anybody else? Before we get weird.
So, I'm guessing that there is none?
No opinions.
And you did have a letter in the file from former mayor, Rob, Bob Reed, regarding, his adventures with the whole state revenue thing.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So, look. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.
Six, fifth and five, that's what I had to say. I can't see the clock.
I got the layer, it's always bad.
And besides the...